Okay, I do hereby call this Mays City Council meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Councilmember Kennedy.
President.
Councilmember Alex.
Here.
President Jennifer Barrington.
Here.
Mayor Matt Sivers.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff.
Here.
Councilmember Dr. David Wong.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay. If everybody could stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
Changes at this time.
Anything from council?
No, sir.
If not, I would accept the motion to approve the agenda.
I would move approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay. So next is public comments, and I saw a lot of signups over there. Let me point out that if you're here for Stone Ridge, which I think many of you are, you'll have a chance to discuss that when we bring it up, which is item C, so you're fairly upfront on that. So if anybody's not here for Stone Ridge, you're more than welcome to come up. That's what I thought, okay. But thank you for signing on. So, we're gonna go to item five real quick, which is consent agenda. Any change to that by staff?
Changes at this point.
Okay, thank you. I would.
I would move approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to business, item 6A, Series 2025A, temporary note, public sale resolution. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. Okay, so your 2025A temporary note series. It is for $7,310,000, and all the projects are listed below. I'm not gonna go one by one and talk to you about them. I do want to say that the bid for this sale will be on July 1st. City manager will be authorized to award the sale as long as it does not exceed 8 million or the interest cost does not exceed 6%. This is due to the July 4th holiday weekend. We were advised by our financial advisor to go ahead and do that, and then we will bring it to you on July 7th. If you guys have any further questions, we have Larry here from Ranson, who's our financial advisor, and Mitch here from Gilmore and Bell, who's our bond counsel.
Larry, what's the trend going with interest? I remember a couple of years ago where it was extremely lower.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, month of year ago, liberation day, tariff day, rates kinda got ball town, went up. They've been trending back down, bumped up a little bit, then they're kinda starting to settle down a little bit, mostly. Recent bids we've had, maybe 15, 20 year, about 3.8%. I think we had a recent one, so I would kind of anticipate yours to be around there.
3.8 is what you're thinking, hopefully?
Right, right. Kind of an average interest rate for a 20-year bond, so. Don't quote me on that.
I'm quoting, I'm gonna hold you to it, Larry. Any questions from council? Any comments from council? Anything else from staff? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would authorize the city manager, or I, I'm sorry, let me start over. I move to authorize the city manager to sign and execute the sale of the note so long as the bid does not exceed $8 million and the true interest cost of the note shall not exceed 6% with the city council adopting the ratifying Series 2025A note resolution on July 7th in the estimated amount of $7,310,000.
Have a motion in a second to authorize the city manager to sign and execute the sale of the note so long as the bid does not exceed $8 million and the true interest cost of the note shall not exceed 6% with the city council adopting the ratifying Series 2025A note resolution on July 7th in the estimated amount of $7,310,000. All those in favor say aye.
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 Closed. Motion carries. Moving on to item B is in boy, ordinance allowing city council to assess a benefit fee upon property located outside the city that benefits from the construction of a residential street, which is located outside the city when the property is annexed to the city. Want to talk about that?
Mayor and council members, I want to start by saying that the passage of this ordinance in no way affects what you do with the next item. It just gives you some authority to do what you may want to do under the second ordinance, but it doesn't commit you in any way, shape, or form. There is a state, by way of explanation, there is a state statute that allows the assessment of a benefit fee in lieu of a special assessment when the city's constructing a sewer main or a storm sewer that that serves several different areas in the city. And one area is developing, but let's talk about the sewer main. You've got to extend a sewer main past other property that's undeveloped, and this gives you the opportunity to assess those undeveloped properties a benefit fee, which means they're not gonna start paying the assessment right away. They're gonna pay if and when their land develops and they hook up to the sewer. So that's kind of the concept of how this statute works. You also have home rule authority in this area to take other action by adopting an ordinance that'd be similar to what you're doing here. In this case, what you're doing is this will be a residential street. Part of the residential street is next to residents that are within the city of Mays. Part of it is next to land that is not developed as residential now, that's not located within the city of Mays. It's outside the city of Mays. So what this ordinance would do in both sides of the street, in the city and the outside the city, they clearly benefit from the construction of this residential street. And so what this does, it gives you the authority, this land that's outside the city, you cannot specially assess unless they voluntarily agree to pay the assessment, which is not the case here. So it appears, you know, it seems to be right to assess them because their property may in the future benefit from that street. Probably, it probably benefits from that street right now, but you can't assess it because it's outside the city. So what this ordinance, if it's passed, does, it allows you to assess a benefit fee against that property that's outside the city. And that benefit fee takes effect if and when that property is annexed by the city. So that's kind of simply what you're doing, and the benefit fee can be less than or equal to the benefit fee assessment, the special assessment that's being paid by the other group. So it may or may not be exactly equal, but it can't exceed the benefit that property's gonna receive from the construction of that street. I don't know if that explains it or not, but if you have questions, let me know.
One question I have is been on this for quite a while. Has this ever been a an issue for us before? That you can remember?
No, I don't think that's ever been an issue for a residential street. It has, of course, been for storm sewers and sanitary sewers. We've used benefit fees in that, in those cases in the past, but not anything like this. To me, this is almost a one-of-a-kind thing. I don't know how often it would come up.
Nick, do you see this with our expansion that we're continuing on with, with button into Colwich and button into Wichita and stuff? Is this a possibility down the road?
I'd say this probably applies to more properties that might have developed in the past that don't necessarily have. In this case, that property came into the city after the street came in, and you know, typically, when you're gonna go into development, the developer's gonna maximize their usage of a street and put houses on both sides of the street, own both, own everything and plot around it. And that's how you're gonna cut down on your costs. In this case, you know, you got one property owner that doesn't have a desire to develop right now. So that's what makes this case somewhat unique.
So for this item, item B, this is an ordinance that would be specific to this one example, though, right? This is not like a blanket ordinance to allow it in the future. Okay, all right, thanks for the clarification on that.
Questions from anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would move to pass this benefit fee ordinance and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
I have a motion in a second to pass the ordinance and have the mayor sign for the benefit of the city. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to Stonehenge Development. And so now, what I'd like to do is have Nick talk a little bit about it. I don't know if Tom wants to talk a little bit about it, and then you guys will have your opportunity if you so desire also.
So the city was reached out by several of the residents that lived on Hidden Acres Drive, which is in the Stone Ridge development off of Ridge Road here in Mays, about the possibility of taking their existing dirt street and paving it. Very clearly, they wanted to do fairly minimal paving. Engineers estimate was put together to do five inches of base layer and five inches of asphalt overlay without doing anything necessarily to the ditches. And at the time, we began trying to figure out how we could financially do this, and we did a lot of different research on this. We talked with bond counsel, and ultimately, what came up was we were asked to kind of help put together a petition that was circular, that was given to a group that had reached out to us to to do a petition, and they circulated this. They received four out of the seven, and so I think what you probably have here today is you have several members that didn't necessarily sign the petition and some that did as well. So some of the details of this project, it's estimated that the total cost of the project is about $253,000 to do this. Right now, the petition's set up on, in equal parcels, seven shares, which are seven homes, with one of the homes actually being two lots. There, basically, what it would cost without a city contribution would be about $36,14286 as we talk through what might be equitable to be able to put on to the adjacent property in the event that it ever does annex and develops into the city. I know there was a lot of conversation back and forth. When I let the council know there was this, I talked to a lot of you individually to say, what's a good amount that the city might potentially carry, knowing that we might be able to assess this to a benefit area, but at the same time, if it never comes into the city, that we'd have to eat, we'd be eating that cost. Very rare that we do this, but this is a very unique situation in my mind, the way this is set out. So basically, we kind of set an amount that we thought to get seven properties would get us to about equivalent to $175 a month, which would be the specials for this particular project. And so we did circulate that petition. We did receive back a petition. I did pass out to you in advance, I did talk to one of the residents that had not signed the petition, and I'm sure she wants to address you today, but had concerns about the method of assessment, and obviously, there's more than one way to do a method of assessment. You know, as we originally talked about it, this is probably, this method assessment is one of the more common ones. Another one that's sometimes done is on square footage. Sometimes they do it based upon the raw value of the land without any structures on it, and those are the those are really the three that typically cities do. But those are also, you gotta understand, it's very unique and a situation where the homes are already there. And a new development, typically, it's gonna be based on a per lot basis or based on square footage is where, is what it's, which you're gonna see in most new developments. So what I've got before you today, I think you'll want to give an opportunity to let let the folks speak a little bit to this, but if you decide to move forward today, you would have to approve the petition, accept the petition, and you'd have to adopt a motion, a resolution of advisability, which would allow us to move forward with it. The other option potentially is to table this item for a couple of weeks, go back to the neighborhood and see whether they can find something that works for the entire neighborhood or seems reasonable for everybody. But what you do have in front of you today is a valid petition in our mind, and so you know, you certainly could move forward, but I want to give you guys an opportunity to hear from the neighborhood, and if the decision is to go ahead and delay this vote, what I've told the neighborhood is I'd be glad to kind of sit in on their meeting as they discuss it, and we'd certainly, my recommendation would be to bring it back to in two weeks and see whether the neighborhood's been able to reach some sort of agreement. So there's certainly two options here going forward, and so after you've had a chance to hear from everybody and we've answered any questions, those will be the two options. There's obviously more options out there, but these are the two that I think seem most reasonable.
So moving forward, before council talks, we're gonna allow you guys to come up and say your piece if you'd like. We do have on record, by the way, a letter from Joseph and Rebecca Anders, and we've all got that, so just so you know, I don't know who you are, but you're nodding your head, so it's you guys. Awesome. So if anybody, so normally what we do, come podium, state your name and address, and we give everybody three minutes. So whoever wants to start us off, we're listening, we love to listen to you. Take notes and.
My name is Craig Helsner, 7200 West Hidden Acres. I apologize tonight for wasting your time. We have not got together as a group and discussed it, which is very disappointing to me. So I would, we want the four of us to want to move if we table it for two weeks. We get a chance to all discuss it because here we are, all together, but some of them wouldn't answer the text, they know what we're doing, but now that we have all of us here, we need to discuss it and come back in two weeks. We have a majority to do it. Jason's not here tonight, that's another problem. So the four of us would like to have a table for two weeks like Nick recommended, so we can talk as a neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak? Aye. Pretty low key here, so.
My name is Rebecca Anders, and I live at 7350 West Hidden Acres Street. And on behalf of the residents of Hidden Acres neighborhood, we request that the upcoming vote on the proposed paving project for Hidden Acres Street be postponed as well. Our community is actively engaged in discussions surrounding the scope and funding structure of the project, and we feel that more time is needed to ensure that all stakeholders are adequately informed and have the opportunity to contribute to a fair and equitable plan. We believe a short delay in the vote would allow us the necessary time to analyze these alternatives, conduct neighborhood meetings, and submit a new petition that better reflects the collective will and financial capacities of our community. We appreciate the council's efforts to improve city infrastructure and recognize the importance of moving projects forward efficiently. However, in this case, granting a postponement would strengthen community support for the project and ensure a more equitable outcome for all involved. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to working collaboratively with you, with the council on this matter.
Anybody else want to talk? No? Okay, anything? Oh, I got one more, okay. Understood.
The motion you guys discussed right, Danny Anders, same as her. So the motion you guys discussed right before this about being able to assess a property fee or assessments against a property that's outside the city limits, so you guys voted yes on that, right? So does that mean that that property should also be included in our petition or not? I'm unsure. The answer's no, because they're not part of the city, even though they will likely be assessed.
And they're not in the special assessment benefit district.
Okay. But that wasn't what you guys just voted, was to put them in that district?
No, basically what that means is that we can assess whatever portion that the city's gonna carry to that property at some point if it comes into the city.
Thank you.
Any comments from council?
I guess I would just say it seems to be the consensus of all the residents to request a postponement and kind of work together on a solution there, and I don't see why the city would be opposed to that.
I don't see any issue at all.
It's gonna be pretty cut and dried. I just need a motion at this point.
I would move to table the requested petition for pending approval consideration until June 16th to give the neighborhood time to come up with a collectively approved project or modification to the method of assessment for the paving project.
Second.
I got a motion in a second to table the request for the petition approval consideration until June 16th to give the neighborhood to come up with a collectively approved modification to the method of assessment for the paving project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, guys. You're more than welcome to stick around and. It's very exciting stuff. Thank you all. Moving on to item B, amphitheater shade structure update. Joe?
They're giving me a complex. Everybody's leaving.
Mass exodus.
Good evening. Appreciate the chance to give you guys a little update on where we are with the shade structure project. I want to, I want to roll back a little bit, though, so that you guys have a little history on where we've come from and how we've gotten to tonight. We started this journey back in the summer of 2024 when we brought forward a number of projects along Academy Avenue at the amphitheater and discussed them with the council with a at the time, we had about $300,000 in the 2024 budget to spend along there. And the decision at that time was to pursue the original shade structure design. It was designed by Athco, and had the cloths, the blue cloth, sailcloth material and the cables as the shade. We went back to Athco in the fall, and in September of '24, we received a bid that was more than double engineers estimate for that Athco structure, nearly $600,000 to put in that clostridium structure in the poles. So it was requested of the council, and you agreed that we look at additional alternatives beyond that. Part of that was due to the concerns about durability for that kind of cost and just quite simply the amount of money that we had in the bank and the amount of money it would have cost to do the project. So we met with Gravity Works, Vince Haynes here, who will we met with, uh, Gravity Works, Vince Haynes here, who will speak in a moment, and, uh, King Solar, and had some discussions out there at the amphitheater about, uh, some of the options that we had for the amphitheater to do something a little different with, uh, structural materials. And we wanted to look to see if we could potentially incorporate solar into that project as a way to in part pay for the project and in part, um, use the energy at the park to offset some of our utility bills. As the project moved along, several factors came into play that caused the staff to request an alternative non-solar design in a way to, um, in a way to identify options. These factors included the, uh, estimated cost to build out infrastructure to support the solar transfer. This would be infrastructure separate from the shade structures themselves. It would transfer the solar to usage somewhere else in the park. Um, production of solar energy versus the usage at the amphitheater, the payback. I know that the packet shows, uh, Vince estimated that the, we're using about $1,500 a year at the amphitheater. Talking to Ross Jensby, he says, we're paying about $300 a month on average. So really we're maybe in the neighborhood of $3,600 a year. All we're using in energy out there at the green room and around those areas. We've noticed that there's policy changes occurring at the federal level, which could, by the time this project were commissioned, um, not allow for solar tax credits. I can't say that for sure, but, um, there certainly seems to be some movement that way that solar tax credits might be on the table as a, something to cut. And then of course, um, late breaking news, um, just a few weeks ago, we found out that during the, uh, last legislative session at the Kansas Legislature that they're looking at taxing EV chargers, public EV chargers, um, for the power that's produced out of them to charge cars, even if those EV chargers are public free chargers like we have out at the city park, we would be paying taxes on that. So, uh, Vince is here tonight with Gravity Works, uh, to go over some of the preliminary design and probable costs, uh, and these costs are outlined in your agenda report. Our hope tonight is to obtain further direction up to and including authorization to proceed with bidding one or more options. Should that be the direction as you, uh, you with council decide. However, um, both Vince and I have had multiple discussions that we are here to do what you guys want for your park and for your community. So I'll turn it over to Vince and I'll drive the, uh, slides when the magic happens in the back room.
Okay. Good evening. Um, my name is Vince Haynes with Gravity Works Architecture. Um, thank you for the opportunity to, to, to work with you guys and, 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 uh, work with the Claire Donnelly Park, um, a little bit. I, I knew Mayor Donnelly when I was there and it was kind of, it was enjoyed working with him. And so this has, uh, some special meaning. I'm glad to stay a part of it. We were part of the initial design. So thank you for letting us be part of that. Um, we did, as you'll mention, we did look at a few, uh, different scenarios, primarily looking at, uh, being, being cost sensitive to what kind of a solution could be there and also be very durable for you. Uh, the solutions we've kind of honed in on are a, uh, are based off of a pre-engineered, uh, solution that's essentially a cantilevered carport, uh, with, uh, with, with, with the ability to put solar panels on it if so choose. Um, the, um, the orientation of them is not ideal for solar, uh, but they're certainly can harvest, it certainly can harvest solar and make use of that. Um, we looked at some solutions that did angled panels onto those things, onto the, onto the shade structures and what, I'm working with staff, chose to stick with, stick with something that's pretty simple, flat panels on the top of the roofs in terms of the solar solution. And looking at some other, something other than solar, uh, we have done some projects, so shade shoulders, shade structures, excuse me, uh, with perforated metal panels, uh, whether they be patterned or, or not. Um, there's several ways to, several options for that. Uh, that offers quite, frankly, offers a really nice filtered light, um, not unlike beneath a tree. So instead of a block of shade, it's more of a, more of a filtered shade. These shade structures are, are at the perimeter, as you can see, uh, on that, on that site drawing, um, and tall enough so that food trucks can still get under them as well as tall enough to not impede, uh, the viewing of any, any audience or spectators that are on the berms behind them. We really kind of want them to be up and like, like trees and you'd see underneath of them, um, in that regard. Um, so the, the prices that we've got are based off of a pre-engineered, uh, solution. Um, and then some additional costs associated with, with the panels. And then, uh, I would propose also that we look at pure type, what's budget here is pure type footing. So we don't, uh, drill pure type footing. So we don't disrupt the park or, and the, and the existing landscaping quite so much with big pad type footings for, for footing situations. Um, we did work with, so with Solar King, as Joe mentioned, we did kind of look at some costs to do solar panels on it. Um, and those are included at the $120,000, uh, to do it. I would say at this point, um, this cost also represents, uh, panels on all of it, trying to capture them, trying to maximize how much solar gain and energy could be, be harvested there. Um, if, if something, some, some lesser demand is necessary, uh, maybe to, to satisfy some solar, uh, usage, then we could back that off. Uh, but that's kind of, looks, look to be the maximum deal. And working with PEC, we're looking, we have a number to, uh, to estimate on what the infrastructure would be. This is specific to, uh, hard, to the green room, and I'll speak to that. We were kind of looked at two solutions for use of the solar. One was an EV charger. There wasn't a convenient location, so we thought, reached out to the school district and they were willing to, to, uh, to entertain an EV charging station on their elementary property, elementary parking, but weren't, I mean, at, at no cost to them. But we'll put this together. To do that, uh, there, if you're familiar, there's three levels of chargers. Level one is what you typically see in your house, taking overnight charge. Level two is a couple hour charge. And level three is a minutes charge. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a high, high charge. Um, level two seemed to make the most sense in terms of its location, how it might be used. Um, but there isn't quite enough energy being generated by the panels to satisfy like a level two. So there would be, we'd anticipate, we anticipated that some additional power would be necessary if a level two charger were, were used. So that kind of put that out of the question. I'm trying to bring not only the, the, uh, solar power to it, but some additional power from every G to make sure that it compensates for, for that. There is certainly enough, uh, to, to, to satisfy the need of the, of the green room. Um, and then the cost associated with the equipment to do that and have that transfers is in that $45,000, which is transfer switches and batteries and, and other kind of inverters and those kinds of things to, to make use of that, of that power. Joe is correct. Um, up to 40%, 30% reimbursement plus another 10% for, for a buy American use of specified materials, um, towards, towards the project. As, and talking with Solar King just Friday, and he's been certainly staying very on top of it. Um, all that language is still in the bill as it was passed the House in Washington, um, but not to renew it. At this point, it would be, as we understand it, at this point, it would be, it would sunset December 31st unless through the, through the, through the negotiations on that bill in the Senate, it gets renewed. Uh, that's as we understand it today. So it is still in effect, um, as we speak. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's, it's uncertain on whether it'll make it out of the total bill. Um, it's a good program. I'd like to see it stay. I mean, I think it's got some great opportunities with it, uh, but I'm not in control of that. That's what we know about, uh, the design. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Yeah, I was going to, is there another?
There is a second slide.
Second slide? The second slide, this, this, uh, is, is kind of an example of flat panels on, on the cantilevered carport type structures. That's onto the left, onto the right, to the left. On the right is a, an example of perforated panels, uh, use on these type shade structures to give you an idea of what the filtered light looks like. The top one actually is a fishing bridge. We did an El Dorado, which is, uh, which an instance that we're actually using. The other ones are, are, uh, examples, basically harvested off of the online images. Oh, yes. Sorry. Uh, what you see on the site plan, um, and it, I'm sorry that, there's a dash line of where the shade actually, where the structure actually is, and the darker, darker shades that you see it are not, are the shade pattern cast at, I think six o'clock on a, on a July, on, yeah, December, yeah, June, June 30th type coming up. Gives you an idea what that shade pattern looks like in the, in the summer solstice.
What, uh, as far as the framing is concerned, is it steel or is it aluminum or what is-
It'd be steel.
Is it powder coated or is it?
I don't have powder coating in here, uh, but it's painted, painted to match, uh, the structure that's already there. And an opportunity really in some of this, in the perforated panels to, to carry the theme of color as well.
Are the perforated panels aluminum or stainless steel? Or are they metal also? I would hope they're not metal.
You know, um-
I used to be in that industry, so I know all about them.
Sure, sure. Um, they would not be stainless steel. I don't think we've got aluminum or, or painted steel.
Aluminum would actually be better because it's lighter weight.
Would be. It would be.
It's, I'm thinking of the rusty. I'm, I'm not, I'm thinking five, 10 years from now.
Yeah.
So, uh, the whole idea is, is from a maintenance from Nick or somebody, you know, 10 years from now when it's, it's, you know, you're talking about a steel frame and if you're talking about steel perforation, perforated plates, you're going to have a rust bucket.
I, ideally, yes. Yeah, ideally that would be a good long-term for, with corrosion, those kind of things.
Yeah.
Two, two materials, but that's, um, yeah, I think we haven't gotten into exactly-
What sort of a pitch or is on this? Or does it move or is it just stationary?
No, it's consistent. It's, it, it is a kind of a winged, uh, design.
Kind of like the one down there at the bottom?
Go back to the slide. It's a winged design, similar to the second one down on the right.
I see.
It's the idea behind it.
I like the idea of the perforated plate because if it snows and stuff, then it's going to kind of melt through and things like that.
Yeah, and we kind of had some conversation about wind, about rain protection.
And also wind, yeah, wind is going to allow the wind to kind of-
Right.
Doesn't help with the rain though.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't help with rain, but, um, probably not standing underneath here for rain protections was kind of the thought.
Whole idea is shade.
We're honed in on, it's tall enough too that's like being under a tree. Um, yeah.
So the frames are steel and the perforation, if we go with that, we think it's aluminum or we're, we're not sure?
You know, I'd have to, I haven't, haven't really honed in on what that-
That'd be kind of a hard thing for me not to be anything but aluminum, quite frankly, or I don't know what you guys think. If you go with steel, I just, it's just a nightmare five, 10 years from now because it's going to rust.
Potentially true, yeah.
Even if you paint it, it's going to rust.
And then, and in the example of, of the fishing bridge, it was patina'd, so rust was expected and part of the design, but not in this case. You're absolutely right.
Because our, our amphitheater has, you know, a white-
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a nice finish.
We would want, I would assume the council would want it to somewhat match the amphithe-
Yeah, I would think so. And I think you've got some opportunity to do that.
I know when we first started this project, this was part of our original thing that we wanted things like this, but we ran out of money, right? So.
So do we have to do, uh, solar now? I mean-
No.
No, you choose one way or another.
Yeah, uh, solar option to me didn't look viable on an ROI.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not liking the solar now myself, but, uh, we definitely need something down there because, you know, Tristan and then, um, uh, farmer's market and all that's hot and things like that. Obviously we need something. But I don't know that I'm buying into the solar at all now.
So our concern is with, with, one of our concerns and why we, we wanted to point that out with the solar piece was, um, if it doesn't make it in the bill to next year, we have two opportunities really to get this done, um, mid-October to mid-November because we've got to have the place ready for the Christmas season. And then the next option would be to wait till right after first of the year and probably early January, February timeframe before we start getting into the spring would be our two opportunities to do this project. Neither one of those timeframes would allow us to have the project commissioned by the end of the tax year.
Yeah, after seeing the numbers for the solar, to me, it just didn't look like a viable addition to this project. But, uh, the rendering, so you're saying if you're sitting on the berm, you would look underneath the structure?
Yes.
So it's not going to block the view?
Elevated enough to not block that view. Sitting, when we stand in on the very top might have-
Yeah. I know Kevin and I were out there this last weekend and that was a question we both had, huh? We were talking about that a little bit. So, yeah, it's a potential issue.
We also have the, we also have the power, the tombstones out there for the food trucks to plug into. We want to make sure that the food trucks have the opportunity to still use that pad and plug into those tombstones. So you've got to have that shade structure high enough to counter those tall trucks.
So, uh, my only comment would be, uh, if, I, I agree that the usage isn't, uh, extremely high on the electricity side of things. So for that reason, uh, solar doesn't seem to be like the, the, the biggest reason to do it. Um, but I would say from an economy standpoint, if that solar comes with a 40% tax credit, uh, then that's starting to make more sense. It would also give us, uh, potential flexibility in the future if we wanted to do a charging station or whatnot. Uh, who knows what's going to happen in that next session, uh, at the state level, uh, in regard to the tax on the EV charging. Who knows what's going to happen at the federal level, uh, in regard to the, uh, the ITC, which is the tax credit that's available. I can't imagine a scenario where the federal government says, hey, you were eligible this tax year and you filed for your taxes and now you don't get it. So, um, I think if it does end, it'll probably have a, a timeline attached to it that said it will end on this date. Um, but, uh, I, I'm not necessarily advocating one way or the other. I, I, I agree with your comments, Pat, on the, uh, aluminum or an easy material to maintain. However, we also got to walk that fine line with-
Right.
We need something durable because it does hail in this part of the world. So, um, at the end of the day, that what hangs me up on this, all of this actually a little bit is just, is that amount of shade, uh, that we would get from this worth it? Uh, because that's probably two, maybe three vendors, you know, in a, in a farmer's market type scenario.
What are the sizes of these things? Sure it's in there. I just didn't see it.
30 by 50.
30 by 50? So 30 wide, 50 feet long? So we'd have 100 total feet?
That's a pretty good size.
You know, and the other thing we could do moving forward, uh, we could, uh, we, we could, we could bid alternates to make them larger and you can make that decision once, on bid day as well. I don't know that I'd go any wider, uh, but like maybe another bay, maybe, maybe, uh, maybe they become 30 by 70 or something, depending on, and then you can choose, choose from that. That's, that'd be an easy way to write in an, an ad alternate to the bidding. You could make that decision then.
Well, personally, I think, I think that, and we need to plant more trees there also. So maybe if we did a combination of, of a few more trees, because we was there a couple of years ago and the wind was out of the north, the, the, the northwest and it was dang chilly. And then in the summertime, as they go, grow, a person could sit up on those berms and, um, have shade from some trees also. I, I personally think, I, I like the trees, but maybe, maybe we can marry both of them together. I know the trees are going to take a while, but-
You could buy some mature trees, spend a little bit more.
Could, yeah, could. I mean, but I would, I'd like to see a combination of it. I, I don't feel that it has enough trees there anyway, but maybe we can marry them, marry them together and then it makes a nice, you know?
I agree with that, yeah.
Something really nice. I mean, we were already committed to the, committed to the, the park and so.
Well, it will be a deterrent to the site as well.
Yeah.
That, that is, that is very, very true. That is very true. And, and that's why, you know, don't want to block the view, but yet the wind out of the northwest, you know, a couple of years ago, that was dang chilly. Um, so a few and they let, let them get nice and they're not going to grow unless we plant them. You know, if you don't like them, you know, you can always put it someplace else and take a chainsaw.
Where are the pumps for the splash pad?
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah.
There, there aren't any pumps for the splash pad, so it just runs off of-
Oh, it runs off city water pressure? Gotcha.
Cause we're not recirculating, right?
Well, that's good. Good answer, Nick.
We might want to, in the future, put pumps in maybe, but, and a catch basin, so we're not using so much water, but that's a whole other subject. We might want to, in the future, put pumps in maybe, but we gotta catch basin so we're not using so much water, but that's a whole other subject. I know I've been out there in the middle of the summer when you could probably sell some shade by ten dollar increments if you had some. So in that regard, it's, I feel like it's kind of needed. It's probably why it was in the original design.
We could ask Tom if we could do a benefit fee area there for people using the shade.
There you go. And that kind of is within our budget that we had appropriated or am I?
Well, so we gave, we gave you a couple of options. So I, I changed things up just a little bit on that recommendation. We had the, I think the balance was about $295,000 last year that we let expire. If you remember, because we didn't have time to execute it and we didn't have a CIP ordinance and et cetera, et cetera. So we still have, don't forget, we still have the potential for that sign down there at Academy and Maze Road. That's something that will be coming before you in the next month or so. So looking at it creatively, it's like, you know, how do you afford two projects in a year? And so we have a little over $300,000 currently in the Convention Tourism Fund, which we've been collecting on now for about seven quarters. That was the result of the IRBs paying off for the Holiday Inn Express. We're seeing about $30,000 to $33,000 per quarter coming in on that account. We've got a nice balance. So we want to leave some in there because what we'd like to do is see that be a fund that Tristan can tap for the kinds of things that she's doing over there at the park now, the fireworks and the bands and things like that. So we could create an opportunity where we could pay for a portion of this out of that fund and pay for a portion of this out of the CIP. If you remember, we had a balance of about $975,000 roughly, don't quote me on that number, at the end of 2024, so we could pay a portion out of each one of those funds. And that still leaves us a pretty healthy balance in the CIP should we decide to move forward with that sign at Academy and Maze yet this year. That is an option.
Feel good about your estimate numbers? Pretty tight for us.
I, it wasn't, for what it's worth, I did not know this 295 number before writing this letter, so I didn't try and spend all your money. No, I, I've reached out to a couple of vendors to get an estimate on, on the shade structures and feel comfortable that we were in the hunt there. Yep. Likely spray it, yeah.
Great.
I mean, I think the first goal would be if we, you know, maybe it happens in an alternate as well, that we try and get those panels at least powder coated. And then we can talk about probably painting of the steel structure, but we would want to look at, moving forward, we want to try and vet out as many of those kind of questions as we could get.
I think we should be looking at something that's going to maintain it for a longer period of time, especially if there's worries about it corroding or starting to not look good. Yeah.
A little bit of cost war.
Correct.
Yeah, aluminum will be a little more expensive and also since some of those structures also use that metal panel as lateral force. And making sure the aluminum is that, has that structural integrity, which I think it does. I mean, it's just something we have to look at.
Worry if it gets too big that like the wind don't take it?
No.
It'll be engineered.
Probably be a, probably a quarter on three eights kind of thing, staggered pattern. Aluminum, I mean, to me, that structure right there, that the aluminum top on the part really provides no structural stability at all to that. It's the frame that holds everything together. It's just, it's decorative, that's all it is. That's the shade part, but once it's tacked or welded down, it's not going anywhere. It's just, I'm with Nick and I like to look at things five years from now and the maintenance on that. It's, it's like our streets, it's one thing to build them, but it's another thing to maintain them. And that's the way I look at something like this. Is what is, what's it gonna be like five years or 10 years from now?
Yeah, as we dig into design, if move forward that way, we'd certainly bring those kind of options back to you to consider before heading out to bid and understand what might be your direction to go. And then, of course, budget updates as we do that as well.
So on the, the cost summary there, there's a 357, 357,000 for the shade, 120,000 for the solar, and then there's a $45,000 number. That's the green room piece, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think what staff is looking for from council is a direction as to what we want to do. Is that right?
That's correct. Just some direction so we know, you know, do we go full throttle where we're at?
The other direction is, is we don't do anything and we use that money for something else, of course. There's, there's always that.
I think we need the shade.
I think we need the shade.
Yeah, answers the question then. So the question is, how much, how much shade do we need money-wise?
I think, I'll go first. My personal opinion is we start with what they have proposed as far as size-wise. I assume we could probably always add on to it if we wanted to. I would like to see, you know, what, what it would look like with that aluminum, verified aluminum on that upper would be nice and kind of crunch the numbers to see how much that, if it adds to it, how much would it add to it and.
I mean, do we have any specifications at this point as to what thickness the panels will be or the aluminum? You know, like aluminum in O63, which is sixteenth, that's probably sufficient enough, I would think.
This level of design, we've not gotten into those details. Yeah.
I have one question. Is there a minimum amount of solar you have to have to make the project available for the tax credits or does it have to be, is it a certain amount of solar has to be generated to be able to that?
Not to my knowledge, Nick.
I mean, if you wanted to pare down the solar piece of it and maybe not do quite as much, is it, does that cost, is it not exponential to the amount of solar that you're generating or how does that, how does that tie in?
Probably a good point. Right now, putting solar on all, all of it, like we've, like we've estimated budget, it is more solar than the green room needs. So we could do the, do the math and find out what it takes just to kind of hone in on the green room only and supplement that. It's much, much less in terms of solar. Talking of solar king, the, the amount of solar that, that would potentially be generated was certainly a couple of houses worth of solar. And that green room doesn't need, doesn't need that, so. But to your question, but not knowing, not knowing or not, something so much smaller still keeps you in the hunt for forty, up to 40%.
Yeah, that's a big question.
That not only includes the solar panels, but I believe it includes whatever structure holds the solar panels. So one or one of these shade structures could be eligible for that.
Do you apply for that before you actually get the credits?
No, so you have to, that's the problem. So if it expires on December 30th, the project has to be commissioned and operating before you can apply for the tax credit. So if we don't get it installed till winter and we get past December 31st, that's just the gamble we take. I mean, if, if we're counting on the 40% and it doesn't come in, just know that.
We may not be.
We may not be there because December 31st is when it sunsets right now, so.
My only comment with regard to the solar is, you know, my, my vision is, is for that to become a, a place to have not only the Christmas tree lighting, but to have a place where we're, at some point in time, we're gonna be showing Christmas ornaments and decorations. I don't think it's all LED anymore. I'm not sure that it would use that much electricity, but it may, I don't know. So the solar from that standpoint would help.
We, we're not, don't, don't take it that we're trying to push solar off. We're more than happy to pursue that. Just understand that we are taking a gamble that that 40% is not there when we go to apply for.
Also understand it's out of our budget at this time.
Wouldn't be if we were just gonna carry it and get our 40% credit, but not knowing whether that 40% will be there or not is the, is a gamble.
I'm definitely more comfortable with pairing it back to what the green room would need to be covered and not have that excess that we're worried about what's going to happen with it. I mean, and we could always add to it in the future.
We put one panel on each of the structures.
I, I think if you, if you reduce the amount of solar to a smaller footprint, by the letter of the law, you should only get the tax deduction for the portion that those panels are sitting on. So I'm not an accountant, but I think that's how they would advise you.
And just know that whether we put panels all the way across or we just put a couple of panels on there, that $45,000 sunk cost for the transformers is what it's gonna cost regardless of how much power we produce.
That $45,000, just for the greenhouse?
That's just to get the power from the panels into the green room and make it usable.
Yeah.
Will that serve, as I say, in the future, if there's other facilities, will that serve that as well or no?
Not necessarily.
I'm gonna say plug into the green room.
Oh.
Well, solar is something we could add in the future, could we not, if, if the political winds change, so to speak?
Yeah, absolutely. The structure would, would handle those panels. There are not much weight to them and they're, they're certainly designed to go on after the fact as well.
There's certainly, there's certainly uses in the city that I think are more consistent from a power standpoint. For example, this building, Public Works, you know, that we might, that we've already heard some presentations on potential uses of that. And, you know, if it doesn't work out here, that doesn't necessarily mean we won't continue to look at options for, for some of our facilities that have consistent electricity use, significant from that standpoint as well.
Not enough of a need for solar at that location for what we're currently doing or even for that matter, really what we have planned maybe for the future. I agree with you, Nick, that.
But the reality of it is, reality of it is, whatever you do is gonna be a significant investment upfront and it's whether the payback over time ends up being there. And, you know, I think as we start to look to design things like our wastewater treatment plant, those are all things that we have to take into consideration. Weather, and it may be a wait and see type thing, what happens this year before you do that. That design's gonna take quite some time, so, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean even if you decide not to do solar here, that we won't continue to look at another location.
Maybe we roll the dice and try not to bite off too much at one time and just do the structures for now.
Yeah, I don't think we need to be wasting taxpayers' money on solar right now.
I don't know that it's a waste, in my opinion, but I do understand your, your point.
Well, I might have used the wrong word on that.
Yeah, I would just say that if you factor in the tax credit, I understand that that is a bit of a risk. It's actually the cheaper option. So it's not that you're wasting money there.
Yeah, if you're getting 40% off the structure as well, then all of a sudden, yeah, the numbers line up.
And in my opinion, if you do the solar option, you could also remove the perforated panels that aren't needed.
That's true.
So.
What's the likelihood?
Yeah, you're talking down the road.
Out of the, out of the gate.
What's the likelihood that the project can actually be completed before December? Like, are we at a 60/40, 50/50?
You're banking on the weather, bank on the weather, that four-week window between the end of September and.
Are there local bidders that do this type of work here? So if we put it out, put it out for bid, we could get something early, fast.
Yeah, we would imagine if we go tonight, we're out to bid in August and, and it's a pretty short window. I, you know, I think your chances are, but you know, go tonight, there's, and bids come in favorable in, or late August, it's just not that much. Depending on what kind of events you've got to try and work around as well, I don't.
Is there a chance that if it starts to not be favorable, we can just back out a part of that? I mean, I know there's going to.
Yeah, there would come a point where you have to pull the trigger and buy, so.
Right, but as we're just having, you start to look at this stuff.
This, all that solar could be bid as an alternate as well and you capture that number and you know whether,
I think that's what we need to do.
That route as well.
I'm okay going solar as long as the numbers work out.
Well, I was gonna say, I like what Jeff's saying. I, I guess we should crunch some numbers. Numbers talk.
And bet it as an alternate, we can always approve the alternate.
Correct. Not take it.
I think that's what we probably want you to do.
Can we use the solar someplace else?
I just want to raise this.
Yeah, that's kind of weird.
We have to do this.
We, we don't have to, no.
Do we have any other project that is kind of on the top list that if we decide not to do this, we can still leave with that?
What you got on your wish list, Nick?
Well, you certainly have the sign, which, you know, we do have some additional funds for. The other thing that's out there, I've just not had the chance to focus on it, but we've also talked about, and I think you already have park funds that we didn't spend last year to do some improvements to the Cathy property as well. So those are out there as well and you could certainly use those for that.
Well, I think with the Cathy property, we have to make a decision with the park and rec as to just what the heck's gonna happen.
We've, we've come up with, and I'll be honest, I just haven't had a chance to work on it. And we've come up with a RFB to have somebody do a site layout of that site and start putting together some thoughts on how, what we'll do there. Depending on whether you have a rec center, obviously, we, you'll get a, have a chance to hear from the rec commission. They put out a survey and I think that one weighed heavily as a, as an option for the community, but I think you'll get a chance to hear a little bit more about that after they've gone through that.
You know, you and I went and visited with some senior citizens and, and we developed some of this towards the senior citizens. I know, I know we don't have a building for that yet, but you know, then the grandiose, you know, it's gonna happen. And they've said even if they can use the old community center, is there, can we take some of that money and maybe put it towards some of those things possibly? I don't know, I'm just, just spit.
Apparently, we have, there's, there's a number of options that we could certainly look at if, if we don't end up going that route, so.
We had that other lady talking about a library or something like that or?
Yeah, there's, like I said, there's plenty of options, you know, there's, there's even some things that we could potentially pursue for the senior center that would potentially net us some grant funds for that as well. Assuming that they keep CDBG, CDBG, that's one thing you could also get funding through to do, to build a structure for that as well. So that's, there's, there's a lot of things that we've talked about. We talked about the gateways. We've talked about.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We talked about art and we talked about some sculptures and some other things like that as well. I know Joe provided you a whole list of options of things that, that just take money, so, and, and they're, some of them are quite expensive, so.
Well, I, I know when Joe presented this to us before, I think everybody agreed on the shade.
I think we need shade. I don't know that we need solar there. We got other places that we could put it that use.
But if you use Jeff, if Jeff is saying, after we crunch the numbers, that using the solar with the, if we get the grants or whatever it is, that is actually cheaper, I wouldn't, I would say, I would say why not go solar if it's, if it kind of pays for itself, so to speak.
And it's an over, it's an overtime investment, so it's a big investment upfront to get that investment back over time. And they could, if, if you do an analysis of the solar, it'll tell you
Yeah.
how, how long that payoff is and it will actually save you in the, it's the 40% tax credit, it's the piece that really
That's the.
to lean, lean your head on.
When we go out to bid, like he said, we could get the solar as an alternate, wouldn't, that, we should know before the end of the year.
So here's, here's what I think I've heard over the conversation in the last 20 or 30 minutes. Let me sum this up. So what I hear is, for the most part, you as a group are comfortable with what's been proposed.
Yeah.
For the most part, you are comfortable with seeking bids for shade structure with alternates and one of the alternates can be solar.
Yeah.
You also would like to see the aluminum panels and you would like to see an ad alternate of making those structures even larger. That's kind of what I heard.
Yeah.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, or did I hear correct? Kind of taking.
That sums it up.
I'm taking mental notes, and at my age, they aren't real good. Alls I would need, alls I would need is some direction to give Vince, and he can continue to work with.
Let's just go ahead and do this.
I mean, I'd be interested in steel perforations if it was powder coated or something like that, you know, so that, just not painted, because it's just not going to hold up.
Well, what's the amphitheater? What are them?
That's, that's got some powder coated.
Those are on acrylic, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
For me, the frame is.
If frame is right now, and this, this budget is painted, we can certainly. Oh.
I think it's.
No, it's, it's powder coated.
Yeah.
It's powder coated, and if I recall, it had some fabrication changes, challenges that had to grind the powder coating off and paint in places. But, yeah, no, it's, it's powder coated.
How much cost does that add to it as a general rule?
You know, I, I'd need to look that up. I mean, I don't quote that off top of my head, but that's another alternate we can do is powder coated, and you know it.
Well, I want it to match, right?
I want it to match, but I'm just saying from a maintenance standpoint, I gotta, gotta take down.
It's got to be. No, it would, it would certainly be a long-term solution of better than, and better than paint, without a doubt. I mean, we hadn't honed in on paint and such for budget reasons, but that didn't mean we can't develop a shopping list for you on bid day.
Yeah. Okay.
The direction is to go ahead and let him start working up some bids with some ad alternates?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, okay, well, yeah, thank you. We'll get, we'll get started on it and.
Clear as mud.
And we'll keep, keep in touch and update budgets as we go.
I've heard a couple ad alternates that might show up, just because our memory.
That's true. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, equipment reserve fund ordinance.
All right. I'm not going to play with my computer for a few minutes. You guys are going to get tired of me tonight. So got a couple of ordinances in front of you tonight. So the first one, they're kind of in reverse order. So we were reviewing the need for the capital improvement fund ordinance, and in reviewing that, we found fund language and Kansas statutes that determine a need for us to develop the equipment reserve fund ordinance as well. And so Tom worked up both these ordinances for us over the last few weeks. What will these ordinances do for us? Well, in the case of the equipment reserve ordinance, it helps us establish and allow the staff to open and close budget years without the need to track encumbrances from previous years and backdate invoices in this fund as we do now. It will allow us to post invoices for projects and equipment. As invoices come in, the prime example this year is I had to leave the 2024 budget open and could not open the 2025 budget until March 17th because we were waiting for an invoice for a truck that Public Works ordered last summer. We needed that invoice to post in 2024 so that we had posted it to the right year. Having the equipment fund, the no-year fund ordinance for both equipment and capital will allow us to open and close the budget years on time. The capital fund, the equipment reserve fund will become exempt from KSA 792925 through 792937, and I've got those listed out here, but the four I want to highlight are, it will make the equipment reserve fund exempt from the itemized budget requirements, which is driven by calendar year and fund balance. So if you know that under the state statutes, fund balances cannot exceed 10% of revenues at the end of a, of a year, except for those funds that are exempt, and in this case, the equipment reserve fund would become exempt, and we would be able to build funds up in that account so that we would need to make large purchases in future years, it's kind of like a savings account, which will allow us to save incrementally for large purchases. It proposed budget amendments and hearings, so again, this one wouldn't require, if we did something, the equipment reserve fund, where we spent more in a particular year than we brought in, we wouldn't require a budget amendment because it's a no, it's basically a no-year budget. 792934 is the fund balance and appropriations, namely that maximum 10% balance, and 792935 is creation of indebtedness in excess of budget. So the reason that's in there, it's for both equipment reserve and capital, is you can, you can run temp note and bond proceeds and grant repayments, et cetera, through those funds. And so sometimes you may exceed your account balance and expenditures, knowing that you've got, you've got reimbursements coming from one of those other sources, so that it allows that to happen. What does this creation as ordinance not exempt us from? It doesn't exempt us from open public records. It doesn't, it doesn't exempt us from being required to report on it annually. It doesn't exempt us from being identified on the state budget form as part of the budget adoption process, and it's still included in the annual audit process. So all the checks and balances for this fund are still there. And with that, I will stand for questions and look for a motion to approve.
Is there a reason that this was missed before? I mean, it seems like a no-brainer, like we would want to have these things in place.
It's, in my opinion, it's just part of a growing community.
Oh, yeah.
We're, we're growing up and we're catching things now that, when we were a smaller community, we just overlooked in the past. Nobody to blame.
I appreciate, no, I appreciate that you guys are finding stuff like this, because to me, it's a no-brainer for us to fix these things.
It just provides ultimate, ultimately more flexibility for us in the future. And, you know, one way to set, one ways that you can set money aside for certain things is you could put it, you could put it if, into a, into the capital improvement fund over several years, and that's the way you can do it. So you, you still allocate a certain amount of money for something that you want to, maybe don't have the money for it today, but you, you want to set aside several tranches of money to be able to spend that. So it just, it really is about flexibility.
Instead of putting it all in cash carryover? I mean, that's what was done.
It's a non, it's basically a non-budgeted fund is what it is. So, you know, it, it, it definitely has that flexibility. You can budget the full amount of it, so in future years, you can, you'll be able to spend those funds. There's just a lot of different ways that it gives you that flexibility.
Any time that funds are removed from that reserve fund, though, it would be a council discussion, correct? That's at least how I'm reading it.
So if you were to remove funds from that, from either equipment reserve or capital improvement fund, by statute, if it's removed for a purpose other than the identified purposes in the statute, you have to have a resolution from the council to move that money back out, move it to another fund, such as general.
For the purpose of equipment or capital improvement projects, though, it could be spent without authorization.
To include in, like on the capital side, the engineering and the, and et cetera that would go along with doing a capital project.
The other piece is if you've got, if you're able to take some grant funds in through that fund, say you receive a tranche of money from federal government or state government, and you want to, you basically want to have a portion of it that you pay out of there, and then maybe a portion you pay out of your general fund, you can certainly do it that way, and it just gives you that extra flexibility. Because if you don't budget your grant funds, sometimes that makes it look like your budget, you're overspending your budget, but if you bring it in, you bring in a grant-funded project through the capital improvement project, it just makes it a little bit, little bit cleaner, the way your budget looks at the end of the year. So there's just, there's just a lot of things. I think there's probably even more that we haven't even mentioned that it provides a benefit for.
How would this change the audit procedure or not affect it at all? I know you mentioned it was still included in the audit.
Yeah, so this will not change audit procedure, basically, it just becomes, it's not, this, this fund no longer is driven by the annual calendar, is basically the way to look at it. It's still included in the annual audit. We're looking at the revenues and the expenditures out of it, and it's still reported as part of the annual audit process, but we don't have to worry about what year a particular invoice or revenue posted in or out of that fund as long as we've got a balance. Right now, we have to pay attention to the calendar. It, and I know we're talking about the equipment reserve one now, we'll talk about the CIP one in a minute, but Nick Vestering is probably the greatest beneficiary of these, especially the CIP one, because right now, he has to get his projects bid early in the year in hopes of getting his projects done during the summer, so he can get his invoices in the fall and have everything closed out by the end of the calendar year. Once he has a no-fu, or no-year fund, capital improver, he can bid his street project in September and award it in December and pay it in March. It doesn't, he doesn't have to worry about the closeout during the calendar year. And our budget software also only allows us to keep a calendar year open for 90 days after the year. So we were sweating that invoice for that truck. We would have broken our budget had that invoice not come in on March 17th, and the only reason it did was because Nick went begging for it. You know, so it's just one of those challenges when you are trying to live by a calendar year on capital purchases and equipment purchases, it can get very daunting.
Another good example of how you can use equipment fund, and we did this when I was in McPherson, we would take the life cycle of a piece of equipment that you purchase, you put aside, say that vehicle lasts, is going to last you 10 years, you put, this opens up a window in the future if you wanted to set up annual contributions to that fund. You could say, we, we've set aside a tenth of that each, each year to be able to replace that at the end of 10 years, and so you've actually saved the money, and you have the money in that account to be able to do that. So there, there's just a, there's just a number of ways you can use it that way.
That's exactly how the city of Wichita replaces its vehicles and equipment, is it, it charges the department, the Public Works Department charges the other departments a monthly rental fee, and that rental fee goes back into the CIP to pay for the replacement of that vehicle five, six, seven years down the road.
I would move that we approve and adopt the ordinance creating the section one, oh, 1-710 of the city code, which will establish an equipment reserve fund and authorize the mayor to sign.
Got a motion and a second to approve the adoption of an ordinance creating section 1-710 of city code, which will establish the equipment reserve fund and authorize the mayor to sign. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item F, capital improvement plan ordinance, which is.
So I kind of, I kind of gave you all my steam.
What does this one even mean?
I kind of, I kind of gave you all my steam on the, you know, the last one. So it's really, it's really exactly like we talked about with equipment reserve, Nick can, can do his street stuff any time of the year. This one just allows us to, to save large amounts of money for large capital projects, and it'll actually tie in nicely here in a little bit when we talk about the capital improvement program, which will support the capital improvement fund. So I'm requesting the same action on this ordinance as well.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the adoption of an ordinance creating section 1-709 of city code, which establishes a, establishes the multi-year capital improvement fund and authorize you to sign it.
I got a motion and a second to approve the adoption of an ordinance creating section 1-709 of the city code, which will establish the multi-year capital improvement fund and authorize the mayor to sign. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item G is in George, 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Program.
Yeah, so I'm going to just continue to occupy your time this evening. So now we're moving on to a full-fledged capital improvement program. I want to highlight some of the, some of the things surrounding this real quick. So you'll see in a minute, we'll scroll through the capital improvement program book, which you should have also in your agenda packets. This is the first iteration of a standalone CIP that will begin to inform our budget process instead of being part of the budget. It usually is a page inside our budget books, and it's been kind of interesting to learn about the way it's been done in the past, but going forward, what we'd like to do is we'd like to be able to inform our budget process by knowing what our capital investment needs are earlier in the year, so that we can plan for those as we build out the budget. So staff from all departments participated in the creation of this document. This is a living and breathing document that will evolve over time, with the first year being comprised of realistic goals. Of course, I pause and say, based on available funding sources, because you'll see some things here we're going to talk about as I go through the book in a few minutes, we have programmed in things that would take the one cent sales tax passing, right? It's a plan. It's not absolute that what you approved tonight is approving the purchase of the things that are in this book. It's just, you guys agree to this plan at this time. We still have to come back to you and say, we want to go forward with this item, and this is how we're going to pay for it. The follow-on four years in the back of the book are really for planning purposes to drive discussions, keep things in our visor so that we can see them on the horizon. And there's some notes about the CIP book and the process itself that I think deserve pointing out. The document is meant to inform. It informs staff on what the priorities are. It, it informs the council on what our financial needs are, and citizens on where and why we are spending our revenues. Expenditure needs outpace revenues in every CIP year. This should come as no surprise. A growing community has a lot of needs. If the funding source is not available to smartly execute an item in the CIP, it will be delayed and reprioritized. This is a planning document. Council action must be taken individually for any item that will exceed manager's authority to execute as we move through the execution year. Your approval of the CIP document does not approve the expenditure of funds on the projects and the equipment identified. There are items in the CIP that cannot happen without grants, sales tax, et cetera. However, we lay these in to maintain visibility and keep them prioritized. We have included items in anticipation of the passage of the one cent sales tax. It is my personal hope that citizens reviewing this document can see the sheer financial need for road and sidewalk projects and get behind the idea of visitors shopping in our stores helping to pay for such improvements. Having items in the CIP help inform staff on which grants and outside funding streams we should prioritize first. Each January, moving forward, we will begin and review reprioritization of the CIP with the goal of having it to council in May. It's a little late this year, I apologize. Future year CIPs will use the soon-to-be-completed strategic plan and the goals that are derived from it to set priorities. I think you will find that the first iteration will still align nicely with what is proposed in this draft strategic plan once it is brought before the council. So I'm going to just real quickly speed through the documents so you kind of understand what we're looking at here. So the first page is really to inform the reader of what a capital improvement program is. Many people have no, no idea when they first hear about capital improvement program what it really is, so this kind of gives an overview of what it is, why it exists, and how it helps a city and a community focus on, on the budgeting process. Then we get into the third page, and we start talking about the 2026 capital improvement program, and you'll see that right off the bat, the industrial part, water tower, well, you can see that it's going to be paid out of the capital improvement fund. Yes and no, right? We're going to temp note that, that water tower and then eventually bond it, but those proceeds will flow through the capital improvement fund. And then you'll see that we have the street fund, we got the water production well in there, we have programmed in the, you know, and it's, it's for discussion, you can tell me to go back and put something else in there in its place, but the design of 119th from 29th to Wilkinson, should the sales tax pass, we could get busy right away in 2026 and get that design done, as we're waiting on additional revenues to come in to work on getting that road done, right? So that's the project that we put in there just based upon the comments that we've heard and the emails that we've seen from members of the council, that might be our priority. You can tell us if we're wrong. And, and also, approving this doesn't necessarily lock you in to not coming back later and saying we would rather do something else, right? We could, we can always adjust at your direction. Irma Street Replacement, the design of that would also happen in '26, so we could have that as a shovel-ready project, should we be able to get us a KDOT grant later on. The street preservation. The street preservation, which is a standard annual thing from Public Works, is in there. Couple of sidewalk projects have been put in there. Those are the ones that Public Works has identified as their highest priorities to get done. By the way, talking to the school district, I think they're going to take care of that sidewalk in their CIP this fall for, over there by the school. Capital improvement program for the new playground equipment at the park. And then we get into some of the, the equipment reserve funds, and the reason this is all mixed into the capital improvement program, because if you look at the overview at the top, it talks about the threshold to be considered capital improvement is $10,000 or greater and a useful life of three-plus years. So anything under that is really considered capital, so you can kind of throw everything else into capital. And some, a few of these things would be paid directly out of water or wastewater, they're small purchases, and we're keeping a lot of things coming out of the equipment reserve. So that would be the 2026 fund. And then as you get further down into the, into the document, this will evolve over time, but we want you to be able to see our expenses by category, expenses by classification, your fu- your capital improvement fund by year. Ideally, you would see that as a fairly level, steady thing, but you know, when you're making, doing big projects like water towers, wastewater treatment plants, you're going to have a couple of, of really expensive years. The equipment reserve fund looks a lot better. It's a lot more level, kind of steady state expenses. It kind of helps us give a little bit of a view on how we're looking in the equipment reserve fund. And then the street fund expenses, again, that's even looking better. It's, it's, it's more steady state, helps us better with our planning. And then as you get into the capital improvement program itself for 2026, you'll get a justification of what the project is and what the expected budget impact is for those items. So this will roll through all of the things that are on that 2026 list, including some of the things that Sarah helps us with on the technology side. Again, your, your staff did a great job helping me put this together by going out and grabbing pictures and getting me the information I needed, so greatly appreciate it. It was definitely a team effort. Then as you get past there, then we start getting into the planning, we start getting into the planning years. So you've got the 2027 proposed. Again, this will, this will likely adjust by the time we get to January of 2026 and we're starting to talk about 2027. We'll, we'll look at that list and reprioritize, and some of those things may come on or come off. You'll see that Carlson Bridge is on there, one of the things that Nick just recently communicated about. And then I believe it was 2028, there's discussion about potentially starting a community center or a senior center design. And the thought behind that is this building pays off in 2031, and it'll be the last of our public building commission debt, and we could start having serious community discussions about whether we want to design and build a new community center over on Academy Street somewhere or elsewhere, and get that done in 2028 through 2030, and potentially start paying for that project when the debt comes off of this building and have a nice community center that the community deserves. And it's the kind of, just, just placeholders is kind of what we do in those follow-on years, but it's, it, it helps us as a staff with this book, when things come through the front door, we have a visible list that we can pull out and go, okay, something just came through the front door. Does it raise to a higher priority than what we already have?
Well, and it helps us as a council project.
And it helps you project. It helps you keep a, a vis- visible to you the amount of funding, if we really want to do all the things that this community needs, the amount of funding that we're looking to need, so. And this doesn't take into account if we have a developer walk in the door tomorrow and say, I'd like the city to help me do X to make an area viable for, you know, a commercial development or something like that. So it, it's meant to inform, 2026 is reasonably executable, provided the funding sources are there, but the follow-on years are simply for discussion purposes and keeping those things on our, on our radar, right? We, we want to know, just like your, your work calendar, you want to know what you're doing two, three, four weeks out, well, you should want to know the same thing about what you're doing two, three, four years out with your money. So that's the, that's the idea behind the, the capital improvement program. So with that, I'm just going to ask if you have any questions, and if not, I'm going to ask that, oh, it does meet the requirements of KSA 12 dash 1118, the capital improvement, the multi-year capital improvement fund, which you just approved. And with that, I'll stand for questions and look for a recommendation to approve.
You noted that there was a, there might be items listed in here that maybe needed, that might not need manager's authority to spend the dollar figure, but weren't all the dollar figures more than 10,000? So what's, can you remind us what the max authority is?
Their authorities, 25.
So.
That's the reality of it. Almost anything on this list.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I just wanted it to be brought up, so everybody kind of knew.
Realistically, I mean, you could, you know, if Sarah wants to buy a $16,000 copier and he's got $25,000 authority.
So it's even more due diligence that we're doing here to project for even items that are less than what the authority is out there for.
We, we just want you to know what we're doing.
Yep.
I'll jump in and say that I think this is fantastic. I mean, like, somebody put a tremendous amount of work into this, and it's much appreciated. I mean, you could get down into the nitty-gritty and argue the merit of individual items, but that's not the point of what we're doing here. I think this is just a great document to, to give us all a big picture and understand kind of what the priorities are, and for us to provide you the proper feedback that you guys need to, to do your thing. So I really appreciate it. And if I, if I missed it in there, my, my only maybe one request would be to try to understand, and I don't know if what I'm going to say makes total sense or not, so I'll just say it, and then we can talk through what maybe I'm trying to say, but it would, it would be nice to kind of understand in a budget year, how much of, let's just use the 2026 example, of that 13.4 million would be handled by debt service, and how much of that would be handled by a budget. And I know that maybe we can't tell that right now, but it, it would be kind of nice to know, like, you know, we have a debt ceiling of X percentage, and in the coming years as we project what that will be coming on, how much room do we have? And that would be helpful for me to know.
Interesting you bring that up. So, you know, we're working with, we're working with Munichas to help develop our comprehensive financial plan, multi-year financial plan as well. And I just sent him an Excel document on Friday. It, it is actually going to put in, the capital improvement plan is going to be in there as well, and he asked for a fourth column. And that fourth column was, hey, tell me how you plan to pay for this, right? And again, sometimes we hope for a grant, let's just say water tower, for example. We hope for some grant funds that'll pay for that, but at the end of the day, if we don't get the grant, the community's got to have the water tower, and the water tower's going to happen. So sometimes it's a little difficult to say exactly how we're going to pay for it. It's always shifting sand, but we can certainly tell you what our plan is to pay for, and, and I can take that as a, I can take that as an improvement for the next iteration, which is only going to be seven months away.
This is a huge improvement from what we had.
And it, it makes us feel like there's nothing that's kind of brought up out of nowhere. I mean, it's all on here, it's been on here for years, probably, by the time we get to it, you know?
Well, I want you, with, with the intent, the real intent of this is, you're the ones that have to go out and, and communicate with the constituents and the citizens in the community about where the money goes, and this is one way that you can communicate it, is by pointing towards it.
It's not uncommon to list sources of funds, potential sources of funds, and, you know, we didn't want to be ultra-presumptive because there are some things that will, you know, obviously that'll, that may change if there's not a sales tax. You know, I think if, depending on how the election goes in August, I think there's definitely room for us to list those. When you go out, so far, it becomes a little bit more difficult to identify what, what might potentially be out there as far as funding sources, but typically what I've seen in, in near years, you do start identifying some of that, some of those things.
Your staff has, your staff has helped populate a, a 10-year Excel spreadsheet for basically anything that they can think of in their wild streams that we might need, including vehicles and stuff like that. So we at least know what years out through 2035, police is thinking they're going to need vehicle replacements, et cetera, and, and what Public Works is going to need, et cetera. So we're kind of starting to get that long-term vision for where we need to be, instead of just, hey, what do we need this year, without thinking about what's next.
Does that take in, like, also, I mean, the city getting bigger, the growth factor, and that?
Absolutely.
Helps with, okay.
Absolutely, yeah. And how are we impacted if we get a cap on our valuation, et cetera, right?
Okay, okay.
I just want to echo on Jeff's point. I really appreciate staff's effort to put them all together. It's really kind of aligned with the best practice, thinking about long-term planning. And I know GFOA now is considering, I mean, is doing an assessment of all the best practice in building, I'm sitting on that committee. We just discussed about, you know, each meeting we'll discuss some best practices. I would suggest that staff also take a look at that and then check on that and to see how we are aligned with that. But again, really appreciate the great, good job. Thank you.
We've recognized the need for a while, but you know, Nick's only been here 18 months, I've only been here 15 months, and we got poor, poor Elizabeth on about month three, maybe, and, you know, it just, you'd be amazed at everything else going on day-to-day and how much time we spend on the phone with people calling us about tax questions and everything else. You know, it takes a while to get some of this stuff done around here, but we appreciate the, the comments.
I agree. When I first saw that document, I was like, wow, what is this?
Never seen that before, have we?
Yeah. And the more I do, it's like, well, there's more, there's more. That's great.
We asked Tristan, I just said, hey Tristan, could you slap a pretty cover together? And she gave me like five different examples. I mean, I've got a couple of, I've still got a couple of covers saved for other things. I'm like, so, got some creative staff.
I think this will really help us with the sales tax too. I mean, as far as if we need to speak to some of those things that we're trying to get towards.
Well, once we get the new website up and running, this will be posted out there as its own document.
Why do we need to officially adopt it?
It is your CIP. It is your plan for 2026.
It's a lot like a budget, but it's probably a little, little bit more flexible budget, but it's kind of like a strategic plan. I mean, you adopt this strategic plan, you adopt a capital improvement plan.
Another reason you need to adopt it, that's what you said you were going to do when you passed the capital improvement.
Thanks. That makes it so much easier.
One thing I've learned over my many years, always travel with an attorney.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I make a motion to approve the adoption of the 2026 through 2030 City of Mays capital improvement program. I'll take it.
I got a motion and a second to approve the adoption of the 2026 through 2030 City of Mays capital improvement program. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Last item, H, Mays Community Foundation Financial Agreement.
Well, City Council, thanks for opportunity to present this last item. As you're aware, we moved forward last month, moving forward, appointing the interim executive director for the Mays Community Foundation. Our ultimate goals for the Mays Community Foundation is that it has sustain, financial sustainability, and it's a, it's a, it's very much an organization that exists on its own, but to get started as an organization that has done no fundraising or anything of that nature, it's very important that we give it the boost that it needs to have. And as I mentioned, when we went, went forward with appointing the interim director, that, that particular organization needs some help in the beginning before it starts doing some of its fundraising efforts. And so what, what you have before you today is kind of a, an agreement between us and the Community Foundation that we would provide the funds to do a number of things, including compensate the interim executive director, invest in any office infrastructure, administrative expenses, marketing, meeting costs, and other approved operating needs, what, and what the city would front some of those funds with the idea that as funds are raised by the Community Foundation, that they would go back and reimburse the city for those costs. The plan is not to just have the city feed it dollars, but as they raise funds over the next year to 18 months, this would provide them an opportunity to be able to pay us back as they do raise those funds, and that, so that they are a financially sustainable We've kind of laid out, I don't need to go over all these, you've got these here, but the foundation's reimbursement obligations, we've kind of laid those out, we've tried to leave them as flexible as we can. So maybe if they're not quite as successful early on, it gives us some flexibility that at some point they'll pay that back to us. I, I have, I will tell you, I have the most utmost confidence that they will have a lot of success in what they're doing, but at the same time, providing a new organization an opportunity to be able to do that over time is important as well. So we've tried to make this as, as flexible as possible. In a lot of ways, the Community Foundation obviously is, is the brainchild of you as City Council, and, you know, the concepts and ideas why we formed it, you know, they're still there. So this just provides a, a tool for us to allow them to spend those funds currently and reimburse us later to get things off the ground and, and really get started at what they're doing. I would tell you earlier today, and I believe we got a signed copy back from the Community Foundation, they've agreed to their, their side of this agreement. It's a, it is a mutual agreement both between the city and the Community Foundation, and believe that they went and approved theirs. I think Chad was bringing in a signed copy of that here several, 15, 20 minutes ago into the meeting. So I think they've agreed to move forward with theirs, and this would assault, this will essentially garner the overall agreement that we'll, we'll have to eventually be reimbursed by the Community Foundation as they, as they grow as an organization and, and do their mission, which is philanthropic fundraising for viable projects in the City of Mays.
So can you remind me who tracks this?
We would, the, the goal would be that we'd actually have an account that any expense that comes out of the, that, that is incurred by the Community Foundation.
Okay.
During the, now this, at, at some point, you may not, no longer have a need for us to build, financially support them. We, we'd revisit this, I think, at the end of a year and kind of see where we're at, but, but we are actually going to track all funds that are incurred by the Community Foundation in a, in a, in a specific fund of the city, so any cost that comes there, we'll have an accounting for that.
All right, all right.
Is there an estimate as to what amount of funding might be needed for the first year?
You know, obviously, we've got the 4,000 per month that we're paying the interim director. There'll be some, there'll be some other capital costs. It depends, like, if they've got a, they decide to hold an event, there may be some upfront costs for those events that you've got to hold, much the same as if you've attended any of the Mays Education Foundation events. There's costs upfront, and then you hope to reimburse that through the, through the events. There's going to be costs of equipment, they've talked about, they may actually have a ready base that they've, they may not have to pay for, and it's going to be assigned some monetary value, but things like that, if they had to have a, had to have a space to host meetings or, or any sort of fundraising events, or they put marketing materials together, I don't know what the actual dollar amount is, but I think it's very sustainable in this first year within our current budget limitations. If, I think where we're at financially, we can support this. Our goal would be that, you know, at the end of the year, if they've raised some funds, we'd like to ideally have that hit us at the end of the year, so it, it's reimbursed into the year that it has occurred, but we certainly understand, we have no idea how quick they're going to move and doing all this fundraising. I know they're, they're into some serious planning about where they go into the future. It's going to take a couple of months before you start seeing any funds come in, would be my guess.
Could we ask for quarterly financial, like, updates as to? Could we ask for quarterly financial like updates as to like what we've?
We've already kind of laying, laying that out in our interim, interim director agreement with CAC. So you're gonna already get those quarterly reports.
That's what I was worried about, was making sure we kind of know what the numbers get out.
My attitude on this is we've kind of already decided to go forward with this. I think we just run with it for a while. If it doesn't work out, then we can revisit it down the road.
This certainly memorializes that agreement. And I, and my early conversations with Chad, it was absolutely critical that we have this agreement. So they understand, we're not just giving them this money, it's a, it's a loan for them to get their feet off the ground.
Couple points, early on, I think the policy or the way it reads is they'll be reimbursed for expenses, right? Or, or they would have to show a receipt upfront.
They'll essentially give us invoices and we'll pay those. Whether it's, you know, they've also talked about having their own, right now, we have a separate bank account, they may do their own bank account.
Yeah.
Right now, we plug some funds into there that are specific for a specific thing.
Right.
They may do some of their own, developing some of those own things, but essentially until they have funds, they will submit invoices along with the monthly invoices of the interim executive director, they'll submit any other invoices that they receive.
Even if they're self-generated?
If it's gonna cost them financially and they have to incur that cost.
Yeah.
The city will ultimately do that.
Okay.
We've talked, I think we've talked about a credit card too as an option as well, so that gives them that flexibility if they get to go buy equipment and things of that nature. And that we would pay off those.
City credit card?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the reason I asked, the dilemma was, it's like, well, if they don't have any money, it's hard to buy it first and then get reimbursed, but.
Actually, the city would pay a lot of those costs upfront here in this first year.
Okay.
It's not an uncorrect word, you're actually a city. It's a foundation. It's a, 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 it's a,